Yep.
And Francis George, is it Georges? Georges, I get it, I get it.
Okay.
I wanted to do Mary Jane Cregan because I went to a funeral today.
Yep.
Dave Conway's gonna do it.
Okay.
Mary Jane Cregan.
Mary Jane Cregan, okay. With the S? Yes, okay. I got it.
Are we ready to call the meeting to order?
Chairman Sorillo?
Here.
Counselor Kennedy? Counselor Mercier?
Here.
To present.
Well, good evening and thank you so much, everyone, for attending this evening. And this is, tonight, we're going to have a presentation by Cool and CASE with regards to cultural affairs and special events. And so, there's no reason to wait. Let's, let's hear the presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Sorillo, Counselor Mercier. We're happy to be here and then talk a little bit about the partnership that we have, Cultural Affairs and Special Events, with the cultural organization of Lowell. As you know, Lowell has a wealth of cultural assets and events and a lot of good things to like about Lowell and many partnerships. And this one is, continues to be strong. And we'd like to highlight some of the things we do together and some of our differences and our mutual goals to really enhance what's happening here in Lowell. We'll go, first slide just talks a little bit about our, our mission. And this is Cultural Affairs and Special Events. We help create and promote a high-quality cultural environment that offers appealing experiences to the city's diverse populations, stimulates economic development, enhances quality life, and encourages people to experience and participate in the culture of the community, all the while having fun. And so, we try to do that. I'd like to first introduce the staff from the Cultural Affairs and Special Events Office. There are three of us. There's Roberto Day, who is our Special Events Coordinator, and Christian Hernandez, who is our Program Assistant and jack-of-all-trades in the office. Christian also administers Lowell Cultural Council projects. And so, that's a little bit of the high-altitude overview of what CASE tries to achieve.
Okay, then. Good evening, welcome, welcome. Thank you for having us here on behalf of Cool. My name is Patrick Cook, I'm one of the co-chairs of Cool. I've known you through many of my past lives here at the city. I also want to introduce my fellow co-chair, Jim Lachoulas, who's the brains of the outfit, but he likes to stay in the background here. Jim is the owner, as you know, of Mill Number Five up on Jackson Street. And scattered around the chamber here in various seats are the rest of the members of the Cool Board, who I'll be introducing at different, different points to jump in and kind of talk a little bit about some of the projects we've got going. But we very much appreciate having the opportunity to come before you and to kind of trumpet the success we've had working hand-in-glove with CASE, because there's been a very strong partnership there that the city manager helped reignite last spring and into the summer to try to blend a lot of the special events and the larger projects that the city agency was working on with some of the cultural and arts programs that Cool has kind of been, been steering for a number of years. So, Rudy, you've been around for a number of different iterations. You know, Cool has kind of, it's been around for about 20 years in the city over kind of being this umbrella organization for a number of the arts programs and events. And it's, it's, the pendulum has swung a number of different ways, but we've been working very closely now on a number of projects that you're about to see through some of these slides with CASE. And I gotta tell you, it's the smoothest partnership I've seen us have in the time that I've been on Cool. And I think others, others would agree. So, I want to throw a lot of praise to the city folks who, who've made it happen so seamlessly over the past year for us. I think, Henry, you want to jump in on the?
This is again, a little bit, a lower altitude overview with CASE. We've been working on public art on some, sorry. CASE has been working on smaller public art pieces. As you'll see, Cool has been working for a number of years on the Hydro project, which is a major public art piece in the Hamilton Canal Innovation District. Some of those projects we see photos of, you've probably, if you've driven by the John Street Garage, you've seen one that's up there now. All of the windows have been decorated with a new piece of art. We do the events for the city. We organize a number of events. We oversee city operations for a number of other partner events, and we permit and provide advice and support for somewhat smaller and other community events throughout the year. We also coordinate the Like Lowell marketing campaign for the city. Some of the new initiatives are the Kerak Park enhancements that have been going on. We just cut the ribbon a couple of weeks ago. The Canalway Cultural District Promotional Program, that was with a grant from the Mass Cultural Council, matched by our budget and Convention and Visitors Bureau budget. And we're working to develop videos and new brochures and some other promotional efforts. You'll see at the end of this presentation, we'll run the first video that was finalized for spring and summer. And we also administer the cultural council funds that come through the Mass Cultural Council.
You're seeing some of the, some of the photographs, I think, on the next slide here. I think what you're doing. One of the things that we've been focusing on is that, is beautifying some of the downtown public spaces, specifically the garages. At the bottom left there, you'll see a mural that for certainly more than three, three to four years was kind of being mothballed up in an office on Merrimack Street. We were able to bring it out and put it into the Roy Garage over on Market Street to help brighten up the entryway at that point. And there's still another conversation going with the Public RFP to add some more public art to that entryway. There's another one coming, you'll see, and a couple of pages we'll talk about with the Downs Garage. But in the bottom right was a, some of you were part of this and you've seen it play out, pun there, over the course of the last year. Andrew Duncan, behind us here from Enterprise Bank, has been the curator, if you will, of our public piano, the Lowell piano that's down on Merrimack Street. Karen?
Yes, I tried to play that piano, and I don't know how to play piano whatsoever, so people ran the other way, but it was a lot of fun.
Well, as Henry can attest to, we, on the, on the first couple of days of it, there was a couple of busker bands and such down there that had done some, just sat down and started playing. And the video went viral on YouTube. We had about 30,000, yeah, 35,000 hits on it of, you know, music in downtown Lowell. So, that happens to be the Lowell piano that was donated. But we're working right now to try to find a home for a second piano in the downtown, maybe to bring music to another area. We're talking potentially Kerak Park or even down by the Call, or something like that, because it has been successful. And Andrew is the one who protects it from the elements, covering it up at night so it doesn't get, doesn't get damaged. The next slide, though, is the one you're going to be hearing a lot more about in about a month. So, you, you folks are getting, actually, the images you're about to see are the first preview here of the Hydro sculpture, which I know some of you have heard about in different iterations over the course of seven years now. Jim has really been shepherding this through for Cool. There's going to be an installation of that piece of art at the end of Jackson Street at Utopian Park. And we're, we're very excited about it. The artist has been really trying to ramp things up to get it done for us here, completed for the summer, because we want to use that as a real anchor piece to bring some vitality up alongside the courthouse there in that area. So, Jim, do you want to weigh in with any Hydro facts? Are we good to just, everything still on, on schedule? We're still looking okay? We're hoping to have a, a public unveiling and an installation of that park. The goal, our goal is to have it by the end of August, so there'll be an invitation to all of you going. And we would beg you to join us for groundbreaking and unveiling, if you will, when that does occur. We don't have the date set yet, but we should have a schedule from Nancy in the next couple of weeks here to get her on everybody's agenda. But we're really excited to finally see that one come to fruition after a long haul.
Right. I think the, the project, when I looked in the files, began in 2011. There were grants, then it, it kind of took hiatus due to budget funding. But it was revived, and Andy Jacobson initially shepherded it early on to get it back on track. And now, it's, it's ready to be installed. We put in the foundations in the fall. Those are ready to go. And Planning and Development has funds to then landscape and resaw the area after this piece is in. And so, it's all part of the, kind of the capstone and a really great piece, I think, that'll enhance the Hamilton Canal District.
The next slide is another, I want to credit, Renell Loris at the far end here, on the far left, is one of the artists from Western Avenue, who's been on the board now and has taken the reins of our creative subcommittee on, on Cool. And working with Henry and his folks, there was a number of public RFPs that just went off of some specific public art in the downtown on a couple of the garages, as well as the, what do you want to call the blocks there, SLS from the Folk Festival, the big cinder?
The Jersey barriers.
Well, the, the blocks that you see that encircle the Folk Festival, there's some, some public RFPs that went off of those. And there's also some, another RFP, I don't know, for the granite slabs out here along Arcane Drive, to beautify those with some public art. So, what you're looking at here is the result of the group that was led by Renell to choose an art, a local artist, to beautify the windows over at the Downs Garage over on John Street. And it's a great, it's a great colorful addition to that corner, and it also has a pretty good reflection of a lot of the city, the city history and the famous haunts, if you will, of downtown Lowell. But we do expect to see the other ones moving in the next few weeks to get, to get gear up for both the Folk Festival and the Arcane Drive side.
This piece here in particular is, we often talk about partnerships, and I mentioned it early on, and this is a partnership with, interdepartmental as well, because the Parking Department worked on this. Toby Marks and the Parking Department funded the creation of this particular piece. So, there are a number of them, whether it's garages or others, that we work with all different groups and try to make these things happen. The, as Pat mentioned, the Arcane Drive, the large concrete faces facing traffic will be done. Those should be fabricated and in by Folk Fest. So, those are by another artist. And again, Renell Loris and the Creative Committee from Cool did the vetting, did the call, and made a recommendation on that one. And so, that'll help to enhance in, in some smaller ways, some of the areas that you turn around. And I hope it's that, assuming they're, they're received well, we will continue to do that each year. On the CASE side, as you know, we work on special events and a range of things. We directly organize a number of them, including the Fourth of July, which just happened last week. It was about 7,000 folks that showed up for that. A new one this year is the Kerak Park Concert Series, and that's funded through our budget. That happens Thursday nights. There'll be five more, two this month and two in August. Then there's yoga, zumba, whatever that is, fitness classes on Saturdays. I think I'd hurt myself if I tried that.
It wouldn't be zumba.
Zumba, zumba, okay. We do Monster Bash, we work with the Kiwanis on that. They do the Haunted House at the, the high school. And we do a trick-or-treat trail with downtown businesses, getting the kids and parents out into the downtown. The City of Lights are familiar with, Winter Fest, and the St. Patrick's Day Dinner. The other events that we do, partner events, that are things like the Folk Festival, Connecticut Sculpture Race, others that we both permit, but also provide assistance and coordination from the city side. So, all of these events require a number of city services, from PD to Public Works, especially if they're closed areas now. We need to do the security block throughout the perimeter, we need to secure it, hard barrier. And so, Public Works works with us on that and a number of the other departments. And so, we coordinate those services and logistics for both the, the ones we do and the ones that we partner with. And the Folk Festival is coming up in a couple of weeks, and that's our signature summer event. It's going to be another fabulous one, and hopefully the weather is good. The last sort of third leg of the events is the permitted, so independent third-party events. People like to come down and create events. So, Midsummer Night's Dream just happened. There are walk-a-thons, there are road races, flag raisings, processions. Also, film shoots. We had, to Pat's chagrin, we, we had Chris Evans in a couple of weeks ago, and he didn't get to see him. I never knew who he was until Pat mentioned it, and then kind of looked at me. I'm sorry, I'm not keeping up with this. So, we have that, we have commercials, and those bring a lot of activity, and we try to work to make sure that they, we minimize the impact, because as you know, large productions can clog up an area. It looks all easy when you see the movie, but in the back, what you don't see is the 30 trucks and 100 staff and everybody. So, those are things that we continue to work, and Roberto is the point person on those projects.
Couple of events, an event and then a, another exciting initiative about to roll out in the next few months, I want to clear you in on here. But I wanted to point out that we just, Cool as an organization, just supported art up over at Kerak Park. LZ, where are you? And LZ Nun has returned to Cool in a different capacity now as a board member. As you know, she had, she was the executive director here for a number of years back in the, what do you call, in the oh, the 2000s?
2005 to 2012.
2005 to 2012, so she's returned to the fold in a different capacity now. And she had a really, a very successful event there last month over at Kerak Park. The Cool was happy to support, but it's also promoting reading, and it got a number of schoolchildren across the city involved in a really exciting art project that is still up now. Weather permitting has still remained, the, the flags that have been hanging alongside the Eastern Canal there have been a great additional color to that, to that end of the downtown. But I also, I want to introduce Alison Lemey, who I believe you know from her other experiences with the city, who has also joined the Cool Board. And Alison has been leading a conversation, she's going to just tell you about quickly right now, to reignite a, it's a, now it's a 12-year-old plan that was, was created back in 2007 about a, a cultural plan that she and, where did Howard go? Howard from the Greater Lowell Community Foundation, we've been having a lot of conversations with about creating a new, a long-term cultural plan for the city. So, Alison, if you could jump in there?
Sure, thank you. You summed it up great already, Pat. But, um, thank you. As Pat said, it's been over 10 years now since the last cultural economy plan was done. And, you know, the cultural economy is still a, a big part of Lowell's economic development opportunities here. And so, there's a, there's been an interest and a need to rejuvenate that, to kind of look at what has changed. Much, much was accomplished from that earlier plan, but we'd like to sort of think about how, how the cultural climate has changed. There's so many more DIY kind of initiatives and grassroots initiatives that are coming. We want to be able to acknowledge that and, and keep that into consideration as well. So, as Pat mentioned, Howard from the Greater Lowell Community Foundation and myself have been doing some sort of informational interviews, some fact gathering and kind of talking to folks and thinking about what the next generation of that plan would look like. So, stay tuned for that. Maybe the next time we come, we'll be able to kind of share, kick off to that planning.
And that's one of the things that, you know, we had met with Counselor Kennedy in his other capacity as the Senator, the Cultural Chair. And one of the things that we talked about that, that, you know, directly speaking toward Alison is, is referring to here, is advocacy and, and getting the support and understanding of what it is we're doing. So, I could tell you in terms of, you know, from Cool's perspective, moving forward the cultural plan, we would count on you, need you, and beg you to participate in that as, you know, the representatives of the city council, to help us shape what the, you know, city services would like to see come out of that. So, it's not just done in a vacuum. We're getting input from the other departments. And, you know, Henry represents very well on the, on the CASE side of things, but just to make sure that we're hearing from the neighborhoods as well in terms of this being a citywide plan, not just a downtown plan. One of the things that, that, I, I happen to be addicted to social media of all types, but we have, one of our part-timers who works for Cool is also very adept at it. And she has been doing a number of, she's, what we've found in the last couple of years is that a lot of the smaller, whether it's the artists or whether it's some of the, the entities out there, don't have the capacity to do their own advertising, to do some of their marketing. So, we've taken on that role for a number of them to do their outreach through our social media platforms. And it's been a very successful initiative. And a lot of, a lot of different, the, the small, if you want to call them the mom and pop operations, have come to rely on Liz to take care of that for us. So, for those of you who follow our pages, and there are, we have thousands of hits to these pages each week, visitors not just, not just residents of the cities, but visitors coming through, we promote as many things across the city as we can through those platforms. Karen?
Yes, I, I actually had an artist approach me with regards to how can she promote her art in the city? How can she and other artists promote, promote their art in the city? So, I think that this is wonderful, because she was trying to brainstorm with other artists, and, and she's an artist at, oh my gosh, all of a sudden, I, I had it, at, um...
Western Avenue?
Western Avenue.
Western Avenue, okay.
All of a sudden, I had it. I'm so sorry, I had a brain fart. Excuse me. Um, at Western Ave, and she was talking with other artists at Western Ave, trying to figure out how can she, how can she show off her art and what she does, or how can she promote? So, so, this is wonderful, and, and thank you for that.
Liz is very, very skilled at doing it, and we get, she literally gets inundated with these things on a daily basis, the requests for promotion. So, we're happy to assist. We get some graphics from them and, and push it out on all the, Facebook seems to be the more active of the, the pages that people are coming to for the information. But you'll see that we post all the events, you know, citywide that anybody sends our way, and they're also included as part of the, we, we do a weekly newsletter for the cultural events, and I think you're going to speak too to what, what CASE does.
So, CASE, as mentioned, coordinates the, the marketing for the city on the events and the, the kind of fun, non-service area side. And some of the things we do is we have the likelol.com website, and attach that as a calendar with all of the events. And again, that calendar has a loop, it's a self-service, so groups and organizations can go on, set it up, it all looks consistent, and then we simply do a, Christian and Roberto will do an approval on it, make sure that the material is correct and something that we wouldn't want to post. We also do the social media, daily posts on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. We have a weekly events sampler, sort of a lower tech, but something we send out that people seem to enjoy. It also lets downtown businesses know of things that are coming up so that they can promote their businesses and get ready. I think it came out from a couple of years ago when the Future Scientist came to town, and I think it came out of a council suggestion to try to get more information to them more directly. So, we do that to all downtown businesses, plus others who've signed up for it. And so, they can know when 3,000 hungry folks are going to get let loose at lunchtime and come down and visit the stores. We do, we have interns, they do a Friday newsletter. We do do traditional advertising for the events. We have, we've done radio, we've done print, Merrimack Valley Magazine. You probably saw this month's issue. We also have banners and kiosks. So, there's a photo of the kiosk there that was just changed this past week. We do it on a three-month basis, listing the events, a sampler of events, because it's impossible to list all of the events happening in the city. And then we're doing the Canalway Cultural District Brochures. We'll have 20,000 of those printed. And we maintain the banners, we'll have, Public Works goes out, and we'll be updating the banners. There are probably a half dozen missing, so we'll get that done before Folk Festival. And then the canal lighting on Lucy Larkham, we have control now that we can change the color. So, we have special requests for different events or memorials or things. We can change the colors within that for an overnight and one night, and then do it on a daily basis.
I wanted to just ask Renell, just to jump in here for a second, because we, as you know, we've got over 800 artists that call Lowell home for their, for their work. And, you know, there's a, a number of them are investing in this, in this city, they're bringing their creative business into the city. He, you know, is the voice that, that speaks on behalf of a number of those artists on our board, but he's also our, our creative guru on the, on the board that we defer to for a lot of these artworks. But Renell, if you could just talk about, you know, having, having the opportunity for, for local artists to know that there's someplace to go, and they're looking to come and set up shop in the city, or, you know, how to get started here.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, I'm also a member of Western Avenue Studios. And over there, we have over 300 artists. I believe, citywide, we probably have easily 500 to 800 artists. And I feel that, you know, one of the things we need to start doing also is making the art that's here accessible to neighboring cities and possibly start doing collaborations, possibly doing like sister city collaborations. We have such a beautiful city with such beautiful spaces. In the past, when we've, I've been part of any exhibition where we're opening it up nationally, like last year, or I think it was two years ago, we had a national show at the gallery that's inside Western Avenue. We opened it as a national event. And I believe we had something upwards of 700 entries for that show. Because I feel like visually, especially to artists that are obviously very visual individuals, the city sells itself. And what we need as artists that live in Lowell is not so much market ourselves within Lowell, but open ourselves up to the world. So, I think, you know, one of the things that, that's what social media does. All the artists at Western Avenue, and a lot of times we have seminars to kind of like educate different artists, if they're not already part of social media, but your Instagram, your Facebook is crucial. But it's very important to think of it not just locally, but, you know, once you're in these channels, you're visible everywhere. And what we should probably be doing a little bit more of, and I have to look forward to working with, with Cool on, is getting a little bit more organized so that we could do it as a city.
And one of the things that, that is, is on our to-do list for the coming months, and actually, I apologize, because I've got an email that I haven't even opened yet from LZ, but there's a conversation that we're going to be looking to start with the city that LZ wants to assist with working with the, the schools. But it's taking a look at, maybe adding some murals, but bringing them out into the neighborhoods as well, not just focusing on the downtown here. I mean, there's, there's a lot that's dedicated here, but if we can start taking a look at some of the city parks and some of the other areas of the city to help beautify with some of the, the work projects that, that she's looking to do with. She's got an army of students at her beck and call, ready to, to roll these forwards. So, that's something that we're going to want to coordinate, you know, moving out. And again, that's, that we're in the earliest discussions of that. There's a number of city folks that we want to have as part of that conversation. But we want to take a look like Renell is saying too, is, is helping, using it to help beautify and market the, the rest of the city too, not just the downtown.
Senator Kennedy?
Thank you. I would like to mention that on the day that we were at Millsix Community College for that roundtable, the, the conversation continued over to LTC, because Anita Walker did an interview over at LTC later on that day. And they have, you know, we do have a sizable community of, of artists in Lowell, but what we don't have are an adequate number of venues or galleries. And what, I think the Mass Cultural Commission would be willing to fund galleries, or to help with the funding of galleries, if we could find locations for that. And so, I think that that would be a good thing, if we could find different galleries in different parts of the city and, and get people to open them up, that they would be willing to support that on a, on a regular basis. Likewise, if there was a proposal that ran through a private nonprofit that allowed us to bring Lowell art to the communities, I think they'd be willing to fund that as well. And so, and that'd be something that, that, that I'd be happy to work with you on doing to, just to make sure that we, you know, we put that together. But just out there in general, if anybody's got space that they don't know what to do with, and that would include anywhere downtown, but it will also would include any place on Jackson Street that would be appropriate. She told me that they would be looking to fund places like that, because we do have, we don't have enough galleries for the artists that we have.
And one of the things that you're keying on there, I want to introduce Sarah Kuhn and Anna Howard, who are also members of the board. One of the things that they're, have been loosely tasked with, but they're going to be, we're going to be ramping that up, is... One of the things that they have been loosely tasked with, but they're going to be, we're going to be ramping that up, is bringing that conversation to the neighborhood groups and trying to explain to them what Cool can do, what Case can do to help them. But specifically to take a look at bringing some of those activities out into the different neighborhoods, whether we go over into Patoka and find something over there that they want as a public art project, so that we're not just focused on six or eight blocks downtown, that we're taking it. And they do a lot of our advocacy work for us, so they'll bring the message out to our neighborhood partners. I also want to refer back just quickly to show you something which is still in the beta, beta stages, we talked about it with you previously. But as you know, we're a 501(c)(3), so we get funding from a number of different foundations that we apply for grants through, or donations that we, you know, just do associations through. But one of the things we have on our to-do list, which we haven't been able to really get into the alpha stage, if you will, is these, is this Cool app, it's a Cool Tour, it's a Lowell. And it's a walking app, it's a mobile app, it's on your telephones, it's on your, you can have it on your iPads. We only have one tour that's loaded on there right now, and it's the downtown museums. But if you go to, if you load the Cool app and then you go to that downtown, if you start at the National Park Visitor Center, it will take you on a walking tour from point to point to point of all the museums that are downtown. So what we've talked about, and this is one of the things that we're going to be seeking some funding opportunities for in the future, is a way to kind of marry it to some of the other existing tours that are already done, whether it's Dick House Cemetery tours, or some of the monument tours that are done downtown here. We want it to be able to, so that visitors to the city can come, they literally, you tap on it, and once you go into the app, it takes you, there's photographs and it's, there's audio that's loaded for each of these sites to tell you about what it is you're seeing. But it also tells you how to get from point to point to point without having to get into a car, you can do the whole thing on walking. So our goal is hopefully to get three to six of those tours loaded up over the course of time, once we can line up some funding to help support the work that goes into the back, the backend of preparing those apps.
Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I just want to say that this collaboration between Cool and Case is a very cool case. I'm very, very excited about this cool case. I just have a question about how do you get involved with the flag raising? Is it because of the permits, you wish you the permits, or what is your...
That's right, the flag raisings have been for, I'm not sure how long, but since we've been doing it, it's issued by flat, by a permit, so that there's some management of control, so that we don't have three, three groups trying to raise a flag or do an event on the plaza at the same time. So we keep a schedule of that, and so we, they come in and oftentimes it's, it's usually on the same day or observance every year. We redo the permit, PD signs off, and it's pretty straightforward.
Because people are so proud of their heritage, and that is a wonderful organization, it's a wonderful event to have in the city of Lowell. I try to take part in every, every one of them.
The mayor's, the mayor's office has all the flags and coordinates that with the groups on the day of the event.
I just want to say that when we talk about art and culture, we talk about art and photography, we talk about paintings, sculptures, we talk about dance. We also talk about music, music is an art. And I want you to know of an experience I had on Sunday, and I don't know how you could get involved with this group, but they were unbelievable. And it was foreign to me, I did not realize they existed, but that was the Lowell Philharmonic Orchestra. And I was taken away with them. They invited me to say a poem, and they put the music in the background. Picture going to a movie, to the cinema and seeing a movie, and there's no music in the background, how boring would that be? But you get this orchestra, and I don't think enough direction or enough spotlight is put on this group, because Keith Lockhart has nothing on this group. They are magnificent. And I'm going to have a motion in a couple of weeks, because they're looking for a place to practice. If I had a garage big enough, they would be welcome to come in, but it's not that big, and they're over 50 people, but they're unbelievable. Please know if there's a way you can put them under your wing, that would be beautiful. Because I just want to say, you're doing a tremendous job to promote our city through the arts. People come from all over, all over the United States, just to come to the Folk Festival. Imagine if they came and we could take that orchestra, and we had them at Ched Park, but we could put them at McPherson Park in Seneville, or Tyler Park in the Highlands. This would be unbelievable, it was free, it was free. I said, gee, I wonder who's going to show up here. You couldn't fit another person in, in the pavilion, but they had their blankets and their chairs all around the perimeter. This is magnificent for the city of Lowell, and what you do is a great part of just a little bit of what I said. So I feel this, and it's just so beautiful, thank you.
We're fortunate to have our, if you want to call her a music representative on the board, but Celeste Bernardo from the National Park also sits on Cool. While she doesn't regale us with song at the meetings, she is a very, one of our more art and promoters on the music side of things. But as well as, what it does though is it allows us to blend with our festivals and some of the other, you know, the big events that have been in place for decades here. I drove by that event at Ched on, the cars were all the way down towards Fort Hill, parked along the street.
And he had something to add to this, I guess, I'm sorry, sorry.
So I have been working with both the Lowell Philharmonic for the last like three or four months to help them with promotion, because they just got a new conductor as well.
Yes, Tom Marchiella.
Yes, and I don't know if this might be news to all of you as well, but we have another orchestra coming in, we have the Lowell Chamber Orchestra, which is a professional orchestra group, so that's another thing to keep on your radar. But we are, I'm working with both of their marketing assistants to try and locate more permanent solutions with them around the city. And to, next year they want to start a traveling tour, so they do exactly what you mentioned, where they play the same concert all throughout the neighborhood, so everyone gets a little bit of an experience for it.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm, I'm just brainstorming and thinking, could there be a page on, on the city website or on a website for featured artists of Lowell? And have it be art, you know, like painters, or musicians, or even writers? And just have, you know, a blurb about the artist with a picture, or a video, or some of their work that they do. I, I think that would be fantastic, to have, to have like a page of featured Lowell artists. Because we have so many, and we have, and they're so diverse, with music, with art, with...
Sculpture, yeah.
Sculpture, and, and, and writing, so, so...
That's something we can think about, for our existing webpage, we could potentially look at a way to do a spotlight series on there or something.
A spotlight series, and each month spotlight different artists from, from different areas of, of the art community. I think that would be a positive.
And then what we need is, you know, we need, keep on talking about advocacy, advocacy, we just need people to also help trumpet that word for us, so that, you know, we can put the word out there, we want everybody to share it, whether Lowell Sun picks up these things and does features about each of these things, and starts highlighting, highlighting those individuals. But getting these stories out there to as big, to as large an audience is really the goal right now, so that we can get beyond just the boundaries of Lowell to expose people to what's happening.
Right, and we do, we have poets here in Lowell, we have, I mean, there's, there's so many different aspects to art, and that we could actually feature, feature our artists and say, here's, here's our featured artists for, for this month, and...
LZ is going to be taking the reins on an exciting event that's coming that's not unveiled yet, but the Letters from Lowell is...
Oh yes, that was, that was actually one of my motions.
Yeah, that's exactly, so she's ready to take that on on our behalf.
I'm very excited about it, I'm so looking forward to it.
I mean, with the Philharmonic, we can, with Kerak Park, if there's, you know, something in the neighborhoods, then that would be a stop where, I don't know if it'd hold 50 pieces, but we can work around that. Might be also something we look at adding on, for instance, City of Lights into a holiday concert, and so that afternoon is a lot of activities and entertainment, and perhaps looking at plugging that type of music as well, more classical, adds to the variety of things that we do. So there are a lot of opportunities, I think, to, to do that, along with the new chamber group that's coming.
And one of the other things we've offered from, on behalf of the college, and we're trying to work our way into it, to help complement what happens at Kerak Park, because it's in our backyard across the eastern canal there, is we've taken, we've had some conversations about starting to bring some of the theater productions, even the rehearsals, if you will, out into Kerak Park. We've talked about a Shakespeare in the Park, if you will, kind of format. They're doing Frozen for the kids' summer camp this, this, this summer, so we're going to try to have, bring some of the rehearsals out there. Again, I don't know if it's going to compete with your Zumba classes, but we're going to try to get some, some activity there during the, during the daytime.
A little cold for a neighborhood.
Yeah, and you've seen, I mean, Counselor, you were there for the, I call it the lunchbox, the, the stage that, with the winch that just rolls down and opens up and is available for, for events and these concerts that are going to be occurring there. So it's, it's really bringing some activity to that end of the downtown that's much needed.
This is some data, not to bore people with data, but this is some updated data that we came up with in terms of the case. The sample of numbers, this past fiscal year, we had two, we tracked 230,000 visitors. We do that through a number of ways, things like Folk Fest is educated guests, and then we add all of the events that we permit, the numbers that they tell us that they have or expect. We put that into a spreadsheet, and we try to track it as closely as we can. Any ticketed items, obviously, are very accurate. We permitted a number of events, we had 137 days with events, the flag raisings that we talked about. And some of our stats for the website, we had 12, 10,200 visitors in the last fiscal, last fiscal year, we had 17,000 views, paid views. And Facebook followers are up at 10,209 at this point. So those numbers continue to increase, and, you know, I think it continues to work hand in hand with what Cool does, and the different markets of the different audiences that we hit, and then cross-pollinate with. Before we do the, you know, just, again, we've talked about partnerships, and I don't think I can emphasize it enough, and we talk about it a lot here in the city. Obviously with Cool, with the Greater Mamarack Valley Convention and Visitors Bureau, they're our fiscal agent for our events, City of Lights, Winter Fest, and Fourth of July, the Lowell Plan helps us with a number of things, including the St. Patrick's Day Dinner, they're our fiscal agency for that. The Greater Lowell Community Foundation has been very supportive, they hold some funds for the Kerak Park account, and have helped us with that. The Festival Foundation, obviously a big partner in the city and with a lot of things we do. And I think the interdepartmental partnerships that we work with, DPD, DPW, Fire, Police, all of the different departments, all the services that are needed to run these things, it's amazing. And it's amazing what these folks do to make it all work smoothly and seamlessly, so that when you have an event, even if things go wrong, folks are there and they've been doing it for a long time, and so that's very important to what we do, and what can be done in the future. Now if you, if you have, if we have time, I'd like to just, if I can do this, I can't see it, but I think it's that one, and I... Yeah, my eyes are better than I thought. Okay, where's the start button, right there?
There's a lot to light about Lowell Canalway Cultural District as spring and summer arrive. Parks bloom and the whistle of the Lowell National Historical Parks rally signals the arrival of outdoor concerts, celebrations, boat tours, and al fresco dining. A dozen museums and galleries, 15 public art pieces, seven theaters and venues, and dozens of dining options are all within easy walking distances. Spread over 158 acres, Lowell's Canalway Cultural District has a lot to light.
So this is the first of four videos that we're working with the Convention and Visitors Bureau with the Mass Cultural Council's grant that we received. And so we have a spring/summer, we'll have a fall/winter that's finalized, we have a, and two 60-second overviews, these are two 30-second ones. The plan is to put them on our websites, but also utilize them in other areas, perhaps with media advertising. And some of the movies, if you go to Showcase Cinemas and you're kind of trapped, and you're looking, and they show these commercials, we've done that in the past, and we think the 30-second spots would be a good hit there, and maybe other movie houses in the area that bring in, you know, a larger reach and audience, to give them some of the imagery and some of the things that, like Renell talked about, the beauty of the city and bringing it out. We were able to get some great aerial drone photography that we incorporated, and we've got a lot more to go. So those will be finalized probably this week, the all four, we'll have them in a hopper, and we'll be utilizing them in various venues. The voiceover was done by someone through the MRT, so we're using local, and again, the CBP has been working on this, and we, in hand in hand with the brochures that we're doing with this grant. Any questions?
That, I mean, that was different, we really, I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the board, I mean, we asked as many of the board members to join us here tonight, so you can see some of the faces that are behind the board, because you don't necessarily see them out there, they're just, it's an entity that meets once a month and kind of shepherds these things through. A lot of it is done on subcommittees or through, through email, but I wanted you to know who some of the folks are that are, that are on Cool. We're very happy and just thrilled with how successful the partnership is with the city. We can't thank the manager, council, and the rest of the administration enough for, for supporting that, that partnership. But we also want you to utilize us, or to advocate for us, but also to utilize us more to throw these ideas and help us, you know, spitball some of these thoughts about bringing art into the neighborhoods a little bit more. Because we, we'll take your, your guidance some, some of these things, but we need your ideas and your input and your understanding of what Cool and Case do to help move those things along together that would really help us.
Just for example, when you think of Kerak Park, you think of all the writings that he did around plaques and stones, and that's about the end of it. But you brought life into that section of the downtown, and it's, it's beaming with all kind of activity there, which is, it should. And I know that we as a city, we can't afford everything, but through the generosity of many partners, they helped to make and create a wonderful place. For people that live downtown, it's a neighborhood, it's a neighborhood that I think was forgotten at the end over there, till people came together and decided, let's put life into it, and you did. So I'm sure I speak for everyone on the council, what a great job, and I commend you so much, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor, and have you played chess or ping pong yet?
I'm going to try it.
You may ask about Zumba.
Zumba, I'm waiting for Zumba.
I did Zumba last week, and I highly recommend it.
It was great, in the park.
Do we have a magic show scheduled down there?
Yeah, there you go.
Maybe, something may appear at some point, yes, off hours, but yeah.
We're working on bringing the Rolling Stones down there if we can to get them down there.
Right, right.
Keep that one on your hat for now, though, we don't want to leak that one out.
We do have a featured artist right here and a magician, right? Thank you so much, everyone, for coming this evening, and it was a wonderful presentation, and I couldn't have said it better than Counselor Rita Mercier. What you're doing for the city is absolutely priceless, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to call the meeting to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second, thank you.